I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular school committee meeting of the Abington Public Schools here on Tuesday, October 28th, 2025, in the middle high school library. If I could please ask everybody to stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Um, before I decide, is anybody who would like to address the committee? I just asked you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Great, thank you very much. Um, the first order business approving minutes. So we realize we had forgotten the executive session minutes from June 17th to be approved when we did all the executive session minutes. So the first set is those which was our last executive session before ratifying the contract. If the committee could look it over, I just looking for a motion to approve and a second and we can move on.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second since you both said I'll make a motion?
Sorry, a second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
And next would be our minutes from our September meeting, which was held last month. Same same order if there's any amendments, feel free to speak up about them now. And if not, just be looking for a motion to approve in a second. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, the meat of the meeting, I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Basta for to go over MCAS results.
Good evening, everybody. So, um, joining me for this presentation and discussion will be the department heads from grade seven to 12, Dr. Goncalves, Ms. Dougherty, Mr. Scott, and Ms. Corbin. So, across the state, the slide that we're looking at now shows the sort of the average increase or decrease in performance from last year to this year, as well as comparing to pre-COVID numbers. As you can see, the state as a whole is still far below where we were before COVID. And also compared to last year, there's sort of not too much growth and actually some a dip in performance across the state. It's hard to tell what that's indicative of. We know that last year we had ballot question two, where MCAS was removed as a competency graduation requirement across the state. Districts were no longer allowed to use MCAS in that way. And so many families may have limited the importance that they stressed to their students about taking the MCAS overall. But that probably, it varies by family, it varies by community, and it's hard to tell the impact. Anecdotally, we had some impact here in Abington, but that really is hard to nail down. So, some other things that may be at play. Chronic absenteeism continues to be an issue across the state, although there has been some improvement, specifically here in Abington. On this slide, you can see our overall chronically absent percentage has gone down each year, which is good news, but it continues to be a concern. You know, if you're not in school regularly, you can't learn the material. If you're not learning the material, how can you show mastery when you're tested? So attendance, as always, is a critical factor for success. Any questions about our chronic absenteeism number?
I have a question and I should probably know the answer to this, but I don't. Do we as a district have any disciplinary actions, probably the wrong word there, but is there a consequence to a student who is chronically absent? And does that depend on whether it's medically excused or not?
So there are, so the main consequence is you're not available to learn.
Yep.
So there's always that consequence. In each school's handbook, elementary and then the middle school and the high school, there is a section about the attendance policy at each school. We follow state guidance related to absenteeism. Families may excuse the first nine absences. And then you, the next, sort of the next set would need to be excused by a doctor. Regardless of whether an absence is excused or not, those numbers still count towards being chronically absent.
Okay.
And it's 10% of the school year that's happened up to that point, or 18 for the year.
Yep.
So, we typically send a letter home to families at the fifth unexcused day to let them know, to make sure they're aware. And then at nine, I believe, is it nine? 10? And then if we have to send another, we're probably having a meeting with the family at that point to talk about how we can support the student coming into school.
But I guess there's no credit loss or a student isn't moving to the next grade because of chronic absenteeism. So it could, we could be still seeing the impact of 2021 and 22 and that learning loss for students who are chronically absent may not have rebounded unless they went to summer school.
So there's, as a friend of mine likes to say, there's a lot baked into that cake. So you bringing up that particular time period?
Yep.
Across the state, there was really no penalty, right? Everyone moved forward together. But we know there were gaps in learning because we weren't here. And then when we were hybrid, there were gaps in learning because we didn't have enough time to cover what we normally cover. Even though we focused on power standards, it still impacted students. So I believe, and I think most of my colleagues in education agree, this is, this is like a long-term issue that we are going to see for a long time. Kids who have gaps that no matter how much time we have them for, we can never really go back and replace the experiences that they lost out on in the classroom. And then related to that, kids who weren't even in school yet, we're still, you know, they, they still have the impact of what was happening. We're feeling that in kindergarten now. Those kids were clearly not in school then, but they didn't have the opportunity to socialize. So if their social skills aren't where we need them to be when they're in kindergarten, the academics are far behind where they should be at the end of kindergarten, right? So this is gonna take a long time and nobody has a great answer, a great solution. So yes, there are gaps still for kids. I rambled a bit on that. I apologize.
No, I think that's helpful. I think the gist of it is that we are not materially different than our surrounding towns in terms of our policies.
Right.
And chronically absent numbers are aligning now with the state. So our impact should be similar to neighboring districts.
Yeah, I agree. However, because every family's approach to school to when you're sick, stay home, go to school, which brings you to the next slide. The importance of learning, the importance of reading, doing your homework, helping you study, or the availability of someone to help you study or help you do your homework. And then the importance that a family places on testing in school, that varies family to family. It definitely varies community to community also. So yes, generally, I think we're not out of line with our neighbors as far as the attendance policy. But the variability between towns for, you know, just sort of the feel and the vibe in the community is, you know, something that changes.
Okay, thank you.
Just some reminders about coming to school. When your child is healthy, we want them in school. And those guidelines are posted on our website and they're also in this slideshow for anybody who looks at the slideshow from home. So this is our ELA performance from last year for students in last year, grade three, four, five, and six. The green represents Abington, the blue represents the state average. You can see on the bottom of the slide, the difference between the green and the blue. We, like you, we are concerned and not happy with where those numbers are. At the classroom level, at the building level, groups of teachers have been, since the data came came to us in early October, have been combing through the data from last year. They can get down to each individual student, how they answered each question. They can look at their written responses to see what they wrote. And we are looking to try to understand, you know, many of the students who didn't perform at the meeting or exceeding expectations, we can potentially predict based on their classroom performance. But the ones where we're surprised, that's really helpful for us to be able to look back and see where did they fall down? Were they just rushing through it? Did they put an answer that didn't really make sense? So that item analysis is really important and really helpful for us to plan, to not only understand what happened last year, but to plan intervention for those students for this year as part of their instruction during the year unrelated to MCAS. Because MCAS, we hopefully remember, is just a one-time-a-year snapshot into how students are doing on one day. And sometimes, just like me, they're having a bad day, just like you, they had a bad night's sleep. And so, you know, when they go to take that test, they're just, their heart's not in it. Or they're not feeling it that day. So it's an important measure for us to look at, but it's not the only measure that we look at. Any questions about this data?
So, obviously because I have it in front of me and I know what we're going to next. I know different snapshots, different tests. But would we have a reasonable expectation that what we're seeing coming out of the iReady results should have some sort of correlation? I know if I'm not mistaken, iReady didn't go in until spring of last year. And that would have been when MCAS was already being administered. But are we looking at data trends here to see where we should potentially be landing?
Yes.
Okay. A lot of words to ask.
Yeah, that was a lot to ask, a yes or no question.
Thank you.
So the next slide that you were alluding to. We, last year, adopted the iReady diagnostic assessment in grades kindergarten through six for math and ELA. So three times a year, students take a test on, in kindergarten and first grade, an iPad. Second grade up, it's on a laptop. It is tied to the Massachusetts state frameworks, but it's not identical to MCAS. It's more an instructional tool for us to use. That's why we do it three times a year. It helps us understand where students' strengths and areas of growth are based on the standards. And so that teachers can group students together to deliver intervention or to stretch them if they're already achieving mastery with a certain standard. So to your question, Heidi, I believe, and I think our teachers probably agree, this is much more actionable data for us. It's, it's not real time as in daily snapshot, but it is three times a year. We can see where a student is and how they've grown over time. However, as you said, last year is when we implemented the program. So in a year or two, we'll have kids who are in fourth or fifth grade who have two or three years of iReady data for us to look back at to see how they've grown. And for us to provide that intervention that might help them master standards.
Do you mind if I ask you a question, Dr. Basta? And it can go, it's, it's, well, I guess first, since we're on here, can you just explain the color coding? Yeah, what it means, and I will have another one.
Yep. So the green is at or above grade level.
Okay.
The yellow is one grade level below in that, in the standards.
Yep.
It's not actually in the grade level. And then the red is two or more.
Okay, alright, I can follow that. That makes sense, thank you. If we go back one slide. So it's, I, I look at the comparisons a lot of times. So four and five are, I mean, we'd like to be better in all of it, right? Four and five are close.
Yep.
And sometimes, I don't know, grade three, that's their first time taking it. So I can, if I look at grade six and being 12 points below the state average, I guess, and this question could be redundant throughout, so I don't want to belabor the point to everybody who comes up. But to me, was that like, where was that grade when they were in grade five? Were they still 12? Did they drop significantly? Like, our grade five is a little bit above state average and our grade six cratered. Same school, is there something being missed? Like, I guess it would be more, what does that grade five do next year? Like, what did that grade six do last year to know? Is there something being missed as we go from one grade to the next that's causing? Or is it just certain grades we know? I think, like, I think there's a high school class right now that's always struggled at a certain point throughout it. Is that just kind of the way it is? I guess that would be more, if you have any insight into that, and if you don't have right now, it's okay, but just more thinking about that.
I don't have how they've done over time at my fingertips right now. I can get that for you.
Okay.
And it is true that we periodically see a cluster of kids where their performance is a little bit weaker. And over time, we can see that trend continue even though it's increasing or they're, they're improving, that we can sort of follow them through time.
Okay.
So.
I guess it's like, is something being missed in that? Like, is there something, is there a core element that's MCAS is asking for that's not? Maybe it gets taught in that grade too late.
Right.
Not too late in terms of the school, too late for an MCAS test, which if that's the answer, I'm okay with, honestly. But, or is there something just being missed? And I'm not trying to harp on five, six, like this could have appeared three, four anywhere along the line.
So I, I think one thing, thank you, and one thing that's important for everyone to remember is that assessments like this are not necessarily assessing the work that's been done in that grade level that year, but the compilation of work and growth that students have experienced each year of their education, right? Because the foundations build on each other as they move through the grades. And so we know as a district, literacy in our elementary schools has been fragmented and not as consistent as we'd like it to be. And so you probably remember from last month, we applied for and we received the PRISM II grant to evaluate our curriculum in ELA from kindergarten to grade five and to implement a new program next year so that there's consistency, so that we know that we are filling in any gaps that there might, that might exist.
Okay.
So I can't say that there's causality, but it's probably related.
Okay.
That, you know, we had one approach and program at Beaverbrook, a different approach and program at Woodsdale, and another approach in fifth grade. So there's, those kids, when they got to sixth grade, they had three different approaches and teaching styles. So we know that's an area of growth for us and hopefully in the next few months, we'll be able to give you some good news.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions about this?
I, I just want to echo Chris's kind of question about what was that discrepancy like last year? What was that split like? And also, kind of a comment too. We're, we're talking about the K through five literacy overhaul, but like those third graders with the 11% differential, they're gonna be in, they're already well in the fourth grade. And by the time that curriculum comes in, they'll, they won't get much time with it. And we see that we kind of need to chase some of these other groups. So what, I, I'm curious to hear more in the reports later on about what we're going to be doing to catch, to, to catch the older students up.
Right.
Because there's definitely something missing in the literacy there. And I'm also just curious, and this, this might be too nuanced, but with that drop, I, I'm also curious, like, did individual students go like down, like even if they were like well, meeting expectations or exceeding expectations? You know, we, we want them to get to that threshold, obviously, but were there a lot of kids who went from like a 530 to a 515? And like, is there just kind of like this gradual slide happening? So I wanna.
Right. I keep, I can look for that for you. I don't have that.
Okay.
Information at my fingertips.
But I hope that's something considered as well, not just like, okay, we got everyone to this point, but also how can we keep helping the students who are clearing it? How can we help them keep doing well?
Right. And, and I, I agree with you. I don't think what you were saying is teaching to the test.
Right.
But the, what I mentioned earlier about groups of teachers with their administrator or with the department head, looking at individual students from the year before and how did they answer individual questions? And, and that helping to shape two things. One, how do we provide support for those students in their current year? So that's happening. And that answers, I think, the first thing that you were asking about. So teachers this year are considering how do we help the kids who have gaps that we're, that we saw last year on the MCAS, but this year? And then it also helps to inform the previous year's teacher on, I think, one of you mentioned if maybe there was something that they didn't get to last year and it was an important part of how students performed last year. So a sort of curriculum lens and individual student support. Both of those things happen when groups of teachers are looking at individual student performance. But then the, the other question about small drops for kids that were still in the meeting or exceeding impacting the overall, I don't have that for you, but I can get that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
I do. So on a positive note, it's nice to see that grade five is, and maybe this is just a nuance, but is above the state because we talked a lot in the last couple of years about transitions and how four to five is a big transition for students.
Yep.
Whether that is indicative that the transition wasn't as hard, I don't know. But it feels like if they're able to expand their learning, that the transition didn't take away from their educational academic experience, I guess. But it is interesting to me, and I don't know the percentage of the state who goes to middle school six through eight versus five through eight. But it's interesting to me that if other schools are going to middle school with a dedicated ELA teacher, that they're, they're only focusing on ELA, whether that makes a difference in the way the students perform as opposed to just having their two classrooms that feel more like a homeroom as opposed to I'm here to only do ELA.
Yep.
I wonder if that has anything to do with our performance as compared to the state. It's just that the transition for our students doesn't happen until seventh grade where they have that kind of focused mentality on, this is all I'm learning. And maybe it's just a timing thing and it's not an indication of actual academic achievement.
I have the same wonder. Anybody else?
I'll, I'll hold off for you.
Yeah, come on, that's only the first slide, guys. Okay, so we talked about this one already. We talked about the iReady diagnostic assessment, teachers using that tool to form groups, to provide support for students and tier one instruction. So that is one of the best features of the iReady assessment that we are using three times a year. So that a teacher sees specific areas that kids can be grouped together for so that their learning needs are similar while the teacher is working with three or six kids in a small group so that it can be more tailored to their needs and to their strengths. And at the same time, we have at both, both elementary schools and the middle school, intervention provided for our students who need the most support. So separate from what the classroom teacher is doing, additional support based on their needs. And that's heaviest at Beaverbrook for students who are learning how to read. We already talked with the last couple of years about phonics instruction at both elementary schools being in place. That is something that will be looked at with the curriculum review that's happening, but it is a strength of what we have in place now. And then one of the things that we need to do a better job of as a district, I think, is balancing for families, what I was saying earlier. That MCAS is an important measure for us, but it's also a snapshot. So we want you to feel the urgency of it being important, but we also don't want anyone feeling anxious about it because it is just one day in a student's life. I think it can go both ways with families. If you were at my house when I was a kid, I felt stressed and pressure to do really well on the Iowa test that I had to take when I was in second or third grade, right? But a friend of mine, he probably didn't even know it was coming and he walked into school and he didn't care. So we want, I think, our families to be somewhere in between. Know what's going on, know that the testing is important, but your, your child's wellbeing is more important to us. And then we already talked about the, the iReady data and also the curriculum review process that's coming. Any other questions about ELA in the lower grades?
I actually have a question. Is it possible to, like, I know that the high school does like a boot camp for like biology. Is it possible to go through any of the questions that the students are getting consecutively wrong? And go through that as like a boot camp to kind of get the kids back to where they should be? It could have been like a piece that they missed during COVID or something that was, that they went to build on, that they missed like a little core piece of it? Is there any?
Yes. So, so the, the work that teachers are, have done and are doing to look at how individual students did, that informs exactly what you're talking about. Teachers working with small groups of kids on certain aspects of that area of the standards where they struggle. So it might be reading comprehension for one group in a fifth grade classroom that the teacher's going to work with them a little bit more, a little bit more deeply than the rest of the class because of how they answered those questions when the sixth grade teacher was, when their fourth grade teacher was doing that review of how they did, do you know what I mean? So in that way, exactly what you're talking about. It's not necessarily, hey, we're gonna have a biology boot camp or we're going to have a reading boot camp. They don't call it that.
Yes.
Instead, for the students, it's just extra support. For them, it's, this is just what we're working on today. But it is for that purpose. Alright? Onto math for grades three to six. Here you can see, sorry, I have it in front of me. I don't know why I'm looking at the board. Here you can see the same again, green is Abington, blue is the state average. The, sort of the success of grade three and the success of sixth grade being at the state average, that might be related to the fact that we've been using one math program for, since I think 2017? Around there, around 2017, we've been working with Envision. There are always things to improve and the long, but the longer a teacher works with a program or a certain text, the more familiar they are with it and they know where the gaps or the weaknesses are in that program. So when I was teaching fifth grade, I knew, oh, the text that I had for math, it didn't really do a great job on place value. So instead, I had an old textbook or I found some other resource that I think, that I, I knew did a better job for my kids. So I would supplement with that, right? So since we've had this program for so long, lots of teachers are probably doing things like that. Supplementing or reviewing things because they know this is a sticking point for kids every year. So, you know, we will, in the coming years, we'll have a math curriculum review for the elementary school. So, you know, we will, in the coming years, we'll have a math curriculum review for the elementary schools because that's the way publishers design their programs. Unfortunately, they they sunset them, they stop supporting them, you can't access the online content anymore, and you can't buy new books, you can't buy new student workbooks. And so um we'll eventually be talking about a math um uh curriculum review. But for now, um Envision um is, you know, serving us well. Grade four and grade five, we do see some scores that, again, are lower than the state average. Hard to say why, you know, is for all the things you asked before, it's really the same questions. You know, are they individual students? Is it something that's happening in the grade level? That's the work that our teams are doing now to try to understand how we can do things better for our kids. Any questions?
Matt, as I said, you know, um Dr. Bossa just mentioned it's what the teams are doing right now. The data was released a month ago and just getting it isn't, doesn't end the work that we do. This is a general overview presentation, but the data teams in every school, the teachers at every grade level are digging into individual student data, question data, how you know, how students answered specific questions, um and then and then adjusting instruction to meet those uh to those needs. So this isn't, oh, we have it, oh, good, look at where below the state. It's really what are we doing with the data and that's daily diving into it.
Well, I I also think one of the things, it is, it's it's a data point, right?
Yep.
During the athletic season, we all check on the power rankings to find out. You can laugh, it's true, like, find out where we're holding up against the state. Um I think people forgot, kind of in the midst of all the conversation about MCAS um and its relevancy towards graduation, that this is actually our chance academically to kind of look at our power rankings, where we are, how we hold up at different grade levels according to state standards. So I almost think if we can lift, shift the thinking a little bit towards that, these are our academic power rankings, then people start to understand a little bit more why this still matters and why it's still important, um because, you know, the i-ready tells us at a snapshot for an individual student in a classroom where they're at and how, and it does align to state standards, but this does tell us on a more global level where we are and kind of where we need to improve. So it it does, it does matter and digging into this matters. And having that one day to kind of hit that power, it's tough. But it does still matter, even if it's not towards a graduation credit, so.
Thank you. Any question?
That was really good, Heidi.
Yeah, thanks.
Can you write that out for me?
Um again, I gave you the i-ready data for the end of the year, um which to Heidi's point, you know, it's another data point for us. We do think it's a better measure of our students individually, and it gives us um more actionable data that we can use, um but you can see there's a lot of green there, right?
Yeah.
Despite the fact that fourth and fifth grade, you know, didn't look so great on this slide, the same kids. So um I do think it might be about, um when I was teaching, we were not allowed to talk about test prep because you were not supposed to teach the prep, so we uh to the test, so we started calling it test sophistication. And that's kind of funny, thank you for getting a little giggle, um but I think it's true. Our kids don't take a test where they're answering questions the way they're formulated on the MCAS in most of their days while they're with us, right? So it is something that we need to prepare them for. How does the test look? How does it feel? How do you answer those types of questions? It's the content they're getting in a different way.
Yeah.
So we do need to do a little bit more of that.
I mean, I hear all the time in my house about just the the ELA ones, right? The the long writing and how it just wears you down. I don't know how many there are, but if there's more than one, by this time you're doing the second one, it's probably coming out much worse than the first one may.
Yeah.
Quick question, for i-ready, where do the questions come from? Like, who makes those questions?
The publisher, i-ready, yeah.
And they're basing it off of the framework of Massachusetts?
Yes, so that, well, so they have um a bank of questions. It's the i-ready assessment is a computer adaptive test, you might remember, folks in the audience. I've talked about that before. It's a CAT, um it adapts to a student. The next question you get is going to be based on how you did on the previous question. It's either going to be the same difficulty level, a little bit harder, a little bit easier, but it's coming from a bank of questions that i-ready has developed through um their metrics with their um uh I'm sure they have a whole team of people um that are devoted to that. And they have customized which questions um are pulled out of there based on the state that you're in. So it's not necessarily built for Massachusetts, but it's um uh through the Massachusetts lens, if you will. You're welcome. Um some similar areas of strength and growth in math as we had in ELA. We are seeing uh teachers in grades five and six implement some of the ideas from building thinking classrooms that you'll hear more about soon, I'm sure, when Ms. Doherty is up at the podium. Um you'll remember that that was PD that our um grade five to twelve teachers um worked on with Looney Consulting and Ms. Doherty for the last couple of years. So we do think we're starting to see an impact of that, but there's always room for growth. We'd like to see a little bit more. And I think we're ready to move on to science.
I have one more question, sorry. Um is what's still doing the wind block? Um or is that still being done just at the Beaverbrook?
Um we have Mrs. Savicki in the audience, would you like to answer that question?
No.
Oh, no, you don't want to answer or no, we're not doing it?
Because I feel like at that age, there's just not um the need to move around classes here at that much is less at that age.
At the three, okay.
Yeah, it came to your, there's kids that really just need letter identification while some kids are reading already. The gap is a little smaller in three and four, so.
Not that much need for differentiation among the students.
Gotcha, so it's just small group instruction within the same classroom?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, onto science, where I will start this slide and then Ms. Corbett will take over. So grade five, um you can see here again, green, Abington, blue is um the state average and um our fifth graders last year, about three points below the state average in science. And now to talk about grade eight.
All right. Hi, I'm Nicole Corbim, Science Department Head for grade seven through twelve. Um so grade eight last year was one point above the state average, so we were pretty close to the state, which was good. Uh for the high school, we were two points above the state average, so we were happy to see this. We did have concerns um that have been echoed throughout the meeting about was there going to be a point drop, especially when you headed to the high school with this not counting for a graduation requirement. So um the regarding, compared to last year, there was a drop between performance from last year for our eighth graders as um I'm compared to the, was it two years ago compared to last year, excuse me? So last year, um eighth graders were fifteen percentage points above the state. They were only one percentage point this year. Um ninth graders were six percentage points below the state last year and this year they were two percentage points above the state. So um positive on the high school end and we are happy that eighth grade also was still performing well. We have continued biology boot camp up at the high school. We did move this to be a half-day program because the students, it was a long day to do biology all day. So we did move this to two half-day programs. We found that to capture the students' attention a little bit more. It was also a little bit less draining on the teachers to have to teach the same subject six times in one day, um so that, um we think, we do think that is helpful and helps to reinforce uh the um just some of that. We have six kind of key components with the MCAS test, so we hope that reinforces those. Uh we continue, we um have one new teacher in the department this year. We continue to pair newer teachers with a veteran teacher and have them say, um share curriculum content and that's just to also help new teachers have a small team around them that they can share curriculum content with. They have me as the department head to bounce anything off of, um but that has really helped to with the new teachers as well. Just kind of some points over the last couple of years that have been a little bit challenging for the science department, we've had a lot of turnover since two thousand twenty. We have had um seven of the ten new teachers in the science department, seven to twelve, um came in from two thousand twenty on. So we've had a lot of new teachers and a lot of new staff that we have been working with. They're great, we have a great team. But this is some things that we have been really working now in PD's when with CPT time to really um help further develop and build up on our curricula and content. So uh one of the things we have been doing is going through all of our curriculum guides that we have on the system. We are connecting them to the vision of the graduate pillars because we're trying to look at what the state may be looking at for potential future competency determinations. There is talk of a vision of the graduate potential. Ironically, it lines up pretty well with the high school's vision of the graduate. So if we can get all of our curriculum guides, having some of those pillars built in, we think that will help. We continue to use MCAS data to identify areas of the curricula that require more emphasis and supporting materials to help improve student outcomes. So we have gone through in um P our PD days we've had this year and during CPT time, we go through the item analysis with looking at each test question, how students did on each test question, how students did in each category of these tests, and then where are they struggling the most? And then what can we do in the curriculum to reinforce those struggling areas? Um every year, there's a couple of sections in biology that continuously are a little bit of a trip up. So it's trying to, how do we build these up? How do we reinforce these more with our existing curricula and our existing materials? Last thing was a bit of a challenge last year and this is continuing to reinforce the importance of putting one's best effort into taking the MCAS exam. This includes through the high school, this includes with the community. And I think it's one thing also to kind of tell the community, you know, why this matters. And Heidi, I think you put this really, really well, I don't know if I can word it any better. Um for the high school, there are scholarship opportunities through the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship for students who do well, but it also is a power ranking thing, it's your school's accountability and it does build into our accountability data and our ranking with the state. So this is still a a big piece that they are looking at. And I think, you know, we've had kids who were coming in who were saying, oh, so-and-so said, this doesn't really matter, it doesn't count, and it's like, it does. And we had a a team approach in the department of trying to reinforce the students, uh reinforce with the students, you need to do your best, it is important to do your best, um we want you to do your best. And um just continuing to put that out there to the students. So that's pretty much what I have to say on that piece. Any questions?
I actually have a question.
Yeah.
In regards to eighth grade, I know um you do a lot of review for for biology, but for eighth grade specifically?
Mm-hmm.
I know that there's a lot of things on the MCAS test that come from fifth grade that the kids haven't seen.
So it's, yep, six, seven, eight.
Yes, so um I only know from having an eighth grader from last year coming home and saying, I didn't remember half those questions.
Right.
Is it possible to kind of go through and see what needs to be?
Yeah, so actually, I was just talking with Matt before the meeting. Um so Matt does, um McCurtin at the high school does a um review, or we call it, an MCAS data review day with the department and goes through an item analysis of where the students may have struggled the most on the pre- last year's test. And, you know, they they'll break it down to the categories um in general of, you know, how what how students did, what percentage got, you know, scored, got the questions right, wrong, et cetera. And then during half-days, and we started doing this a little bit last year, it's going to continue this year, during half-days, going back and maybe reinforcing some of the content from sixth grade that they may have forgotten. So and they'll use previous data, um and just general, hey, do you remember this topic from sixth grade? Maybe not, let's go back and review it really quickly because we're only going to have a short period of time together today. So instead of covering all new material that, you know, in twenty minutes during a half-day, maybe to go back and do some quick review.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Corbett, can I ask you one question on, I think it's the next page? It's actually the one after, I'm sorry, it's the one where it has, yes. So where you mentioned last year and it talks about eighth grade, I'm guessing from our perspective now, is that two years ago, is eighth grade? So fifteen percentage points above the state is fantastic. When they took biology, it was down to two points above the state. Is that a case of biology being where what usually happens? Like, is there anything you can, has that happened before? I I can't remember past years, but where a grade did really well in science in eighth grade and then kind of came back down to the, I'll call it, normal level in ninth grade?
So there's a lot of factors in play there as well. How many students from the middle school went to the high school um of that class? How many of them may have went to other?
Private whatever, yeah.
Private schools, vocational school, et cetera. Um so there's a piece there. Um how many new students do you get once you go into the high school? So you may not be testing that same cohort of kids, so that's where it gets a little bit money.
Okay, I understand.
Biology is also a a new subject essentially with the science. When you have eighth grade, it's a very general science. Biology can get more complicated when you're getting into some of the more advanced topics and that. There's a lot more studying involved, in my opinion, once you head to ninth grade and have to learn some of those topics. So kind of a different school of thought once you get there, but difficult to compare unless you have kid for kid.
Okay, all right, that makes sense, thank you.
Yeah, yes.
Just to clarify, does every ninth grader take biology?
Every ninth grader takes biology, yes.
Okay.
As well as if we have students who may need to transfer in from, if they came from another school and need to come in, we generally, if they haven't taken biology before, we have them in biology. If they have to take the MCAS, we try to give them the biology MCAS.
Okay.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Corbett, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
And uh joining us is Mr. Scott. You might remember that um last year, well, I'm gonna let you talk, there's a new MCAS, the civics MCAS, go ahead, Mr. Scott.
Yes, this is our first year taking MCAS civics in eighth grade. Uh you can see the data, so we obviously only have one, one data point from this past year, so we were three points below the state average. And so you can interpret that as what it means, it's it's, you know, a number, we obviously want to be above state averages, this is one year, we don't have historical data to compare it to, so this is where we're starting from, basically.
Mr. Scott, I don't want to interrupt, there was no eighth, there was no civics MCAS for the current sophomores?
Correct, they would have been pilots potentially, but we don't have.
Okay.
Like the, they don't give the data like this and so to the degree that we have for this one.
Okay, I think they took it, it might have been a pile, but yeah.
I think there were some pilot questions perhaps?
This was the first, like, prime time.
Okay, got it, thank you. That helps answer a question I had on Dr. Boss's original slide of NA when it was a comparison to the year before too, so thank you.
Of course. So this kind of brings us to areas of strength and growth. We have obviously interventions and supports for all the students that we're doing in the classroom, so whether they, uh whatever supports that they need, they're going to reach the students. This is similar to any other department, um so that's a way that we're trying to approach and meet the needs for the students. This can be slightly confusing because it sounds similar to i-ready. We use i-civics, which is not an assessment tool, it's a lesson plan and curriculum tool. So that is basically a website and curriculum materials that teachers are using to provide exposure to students to civics topics. This is something that's a free resource, uh nationwide thing that that our teachers can use. It's really effective and it provides great material for the students, but it does not provide statistical data or assessment data like i-ready would for tracking students, you know, as a separate assessment aside from just the MCAS results. So it's really just a curriculum tool to help strengthen the the delivery of the content for the students. And then we've focused for a long time in eighth grade about argumentative writing. Uh this has been a long-term approach and it's something that uh we think benefits, obviously, the whole student, but obviously helps the uh MCAS performance as well. Things that we're looking to continue to grow with would be uh more independent and small group work for students, so whether this be um students that are grouped heterogeneously or if we're determined that there's a subset of students that need specific focus on a skill or a topic, that's something that the teachers have the autonomy to do within the classroom as they see fit. Uh and we're going to work to build that out more effectively. Um we're doing professional development now that we have the data to look at the results from how they perform in certain types of questions and certain style of questions. Uh we're going to use this data to inform our professional development over the coming years. And then, of course, we're going to continue to expose students in MCAS civic-style prompts, the more. The more, frankly, the more examples that we have from the state as the portfolio of questions grows, the more we have to offer that to the students to practice with. Where this is a newer thing for us. That's something that we're still building out, obviously. Questions can I answer for MCAS civics?
Yes, please. I think you just sort of hit on one of the, one of my questions was going to be is, do you think that the scores were based more on content or structure of answer? Because those are actually looking at two different things.
Yeah, I think I would almost add a third category too of like a skill-based thing. I think that would probably be the, when, looking at the data, the two questions that had the biggest delta between our students and the students on the state were assess the document. And so, which is kind of frustrating because we do a lot of primary source work to begin with. And so obviously that tells us that we need to continue that work with primary sources, but also work with it in the framework of how the MCAS is asking them to utilize these sources. So that's definitely something that, I would say that's skill-based and content-based as a result as well, would be my two inclinations in that regard.
And my other question is the, is the iCivics website, is that aligned to Massachusetts frameworks as well or?
That's a great question. I believe it's a national organization, but I could be wrong. I'll have to seek an answer for that.
No, I just didn't know if it was going to be able to help you hone things down a little bit or no, but.
I don't know that they are basing their delivery off of MCAS civics specifically. I believe it's a national organization, but I have to, I have to check.
Thank you.
Since this is a new exam, I hope you can answer this. What's the balance between like open response writing type questions versus multiple choice on this?
There's a heavier focus on multiple choice questions for sure, but there's a handful, I think, two to four open response style questions. But the majority of the questions are multiple choice or it's, some of the questions would say, for example, like, here's a list of rights versus responsibilities. Which of these things are rights? Which of them are responsibilities? So it's, it's not really multiple choice in the classic way we think of it, but it's not writing either.
Thank you very much, Mr. Scott.
Of course. Thank you.
Dr. Basta, before we move on, do you mind, this may be an opinion question if nothing else.
Go ahead.
Do you think that, so civics and biology are so very specific and they're given the tests in the year that they're learning, do you think that could like have an effect where they don't have the background on those things? Where math, and I know it's testing math that you're learning them, but math in general is something they've had. Like civics, you're not getting until eighth grade and it's much different than geography in seventh grade. Biology, Ms. Corbett, I echo your sentiment. It much wrong. So is there, like, do you think that could play a part in sometimes with those one-time tests and one, like, one-time core central subject only being done that one year where it's actually taking place? Could that affect like the grading, you think?
I think so, yeah. I mean, just like you said, Ms. Corbett pointed out, the kids who had been exposed to general science forever take that test in eighth grade and then they have really a couple of months of school, right?
Yeah.
Six, is it six months? They have six or seven months before they take a very content-specific exam. So I do think it's, it's different.
Could be the timing.
It's a very different kind of test.
The timing of when the exam's administered to you during the week. All right, thank you. So I just wanted to get that out before. We moved on to the stuff that takes place three through 10 or whatever. So, thank you, Ms. Doherty.
I appreciate.
Ms. Scott, you're in depth, bringing the math into the history. I love it. Our scores for grade seven, we were 16 below the state. That is a pattern that we usually see. I, we always question whether it's the transition from grade six to grade seven when we start in the elementary school and kind of go into an individual force, but they always seem to recover in grade eight. So at grade eight, we were 3% above the state and at the high school, we were 4% below the state. But there's a lot of good things happening in that data that you don't necessarily see. I don't want to go too bad. Last year, in our exceeding expectations category for grade 10, we were below the state by 10%. And that was one of the things we always said. When you combine the two scores, we're similar to the state. But when you look at them individually, we do not have as many students in the exceeding expectations category. This year we did. We were only 1% below the state. So the question becomes, why did that happen? Well, I would love to say that the first reason is because of the curriculum work we've been doing consistently throughout the math department. I would love, and I truly think that it is the building thinking classrooms that we've been doing to increase persevering and problem solving. So that when students sit down to do a problem, they know it's okay. If they don't remember the way that it was taught, that they can problem solve with the tools that they have in their toolbox that they've learned in their math class. That's what I would love to say. I'm still confident that's the reason. And I truly think a piece of it is that the test was not a graduation requirement. Unfortunately, sometimes math comes with anxiety and particularly when it comes up for graduation. And so I think when kids knew that they could just go and do their best, that's all we're asking here. Just, just do your best. I'm hoping that that was a reason that maybe that was one of the benefits for us, that students were able to kind of get a little bit further on questions that before they might have just got frustrated on anything. I was curious, when I looked at grade 10 went from below, 11% below in the exceeding and meeting to 4% from last year and really thought to myself, what was the reason for that? So I really wanted to go ahead and look to see what happened for the students who were passing. And when you take a look at it, did the fact that it did not count for a math, for a graduation requirement do anything? This current year, we had 89%, 89% of the students passed the test, which we call partially meet expectations and above. And last year, that was 87. It was very similar. So our data is very similar to last year, but our students who are in the exceeding category or in the top level before of the meeting expectations are pushing themselves up into the exceeding category. So that is good news that you don't necessarily see when the two categories are combined. Grade eight was above the state by 3% in exceeding and meeting as well. In terms of our recommendations, the, it's very similar to what we said last year. Our biggest thing is our curriculum work. It's creating that curriculum and resources that foster that independent thinking so that when a student goes ahead and they take a test, that they can actually go ahead and persevere through a problem that they've never seen before. With that, we are also doing professional development with the building thinking classrooms. And one of the best professional developments you're going to find, and I think other teachers will tell you, is that when teachers have a chance to sit down and talk to teachers to find out what's going on. And we have made a commitment to be able to do that, whether it's through our CPTs approximately one time a term. We're lucky enough to have a PD day where we just sit down and work on where we are now and where are we going next. And now that we've built out basically our algebra and geometry, how can we tweak those? While our algebra two and pre-calculus are now coming down the road. So although it's a moving target, everything's moving forward. And I would definitely say that the rigor has increased as well as the incorporation of the MCAS classes into actually assessments. And I know that that was one of the questions you would ask before in terms of, are we seeing these types of questions on the test? And that is something that we are absolutely doing. Once again, we always want to work on, on closing gaps. I mean, that's the hard part. We have school from September to June, but we only really do MCAS until May. And what is it that gets caught that last piece? We always have to make sure that something doesn't fall over. In this case, you can see what it was in grade 10. It was probability. That was our one thing that was, that really kind of stuck out and we made that, that quick rush to get to at the end. And one of the things we want to work on in grade seven is a more targeted work and constructive response. Thinking that that will get us, if a student can do a constructive response, they have a better chance at a multiple choice and a selective response. And many times for them, it's about reading the question. They're not used to seeing the questions written this way. So it's about deciphering the question or the skill of taking the test. We have, we, one of the things we would like is for our teachers to be able to see each other. And I know that we're given time. We just never get a chance to get out of our own classroom to do it. It's really kind of on us. But to take advantage of that and make that a priority. One of the things that did happen a couple of years ago when we had ninth grade teachers go down and see eighth grade teachers, they're like, I just taught that yesterday, you know, and we realized that we were doing a lot of repetition. And until they see it, I know it because I get to see it all. But until they actually see it, they don't believe and say, hey, wait, then why are we doing that again? Let's move forward. And that's really what's caused the change in our curriculum. And last but not least, we still need to continue to explore why all of our students aren't doing better in exceeding. They are in grade 10, but how can we push that in grade eight? How can we push that in grade seven?
Ms. Doherty, I have a question.
Yes.
Would you, and it's okay if you don't, would you happen to know what the, when I say current, I'm referring to current in terms of our slides, what the current grade eight would have done the year before in terms of their comparison to the state? So they're plus 3% here. Do you know what they were as seventh graders?
I happen to have that information. So as, I have to do the math on the spot, so give me one second. What piece of data are you looking for? The meeting and exceeding?
Yeah, so I guess the comparison to what's in here, yeah.
So for grade seven in 2024, meeting and exceeding added up to 29 and we were 38 in the state.
Okay, so it is kind of, because I noticed the state's consistent seventh and eighth grade of meeting exceeding. We have a large jump from seventh. So I was, I was so like, back to the question I asked in the very beginning about like grade trends. That does show that, I guess, what I was looking is, is that, is, is the jump from 23 up something we can look towards? I think you giving me those numbers say it is something we can look towards.
Absolutely.
Again, for going forward. So it may just be that coming into grade seven and kind of learning that may be where it's tripping them up some.
We've been looking at this, trying to decrease the transition. Is it a six through eight school versus, you know, we do five, six, and then seven and eight? They kind of go into that individual teacher, more of a high school model. Somewhere the transition is going to hit. So whether it's in grade six, grade seven, but the great news is that they seem to kind of figure it out by eighth grade. They feel more confident. They're doing the math and they get themselves right back up to speed. So those people.
Thank you. No, that's kind of what I was looking for. I appreciate it.
Ms. Doherty, I have a question regarding, I notice in the ninth grade math that, I don't know if it's all teachers, but one of the teachers is using old MCAS questions within the testing. Would that be possible to do it for maybe like seventh or eighth grade, just to get them familiar and maybe less?
So we do that, but one of the things we've started to do with grade seven, eight, we are at a truly an advantage at the high school. They release every question. They don't have that at the middle school. They release a handful of questions. So, and what they used to do, which was super helpful, is that we would get a chart to see what the, what percent of students answered each response. So if we did below the state, we could see, wow, our kids all chose D. D was the wrong answer. What is it that we have to look at? They don't give us that information anymore, which is kind of stinks because it was super, super helpful. So one of the things we talked about at the data team meetings with Ms. McCurtin was to incorporate more of the MCAS questions first into the building thinking classrooms. In other words, have the students out there at the board working on them together and then incorporating them into the test. Because if the first time they see him is on the test, it really doesn't help them. But when they're working together in the building thinking classrooms, they're working as a team to basically break down the vocabulary, right? And to, to break down the problem-solving piece. That's, that's really where our, our hope is to hit the grade seven and eight there.
I have a question and observation. I know you touched upon exceeding expectations is an area to look at. I think there are pockets of grades where that is well below the state, like you highlighted last year's 10th grade. I think that there is a good story, if I'm not mistaken, and I don't know if it's in all subjects and I only looked at scattering of grades, but are, does not meet expectations is lower than the state, which is a good thing. And that the students who are not meeting expectations in Abington are far fewer than as we compared to the state. So I think, and am I correct in saying that's accurate for math as well, from your general understanding?
Yes.
So I think we, we're focused right now on the meets and exceeds and I think that that's great. It's not the greatest story to talk about, but I do think that there's a good story when you look at students who maybe in another district would struggle more than they do in Abington, were able to bring them up to at least partially meeting, if not meeting expectations. So I think that, that's a very good story and gives us, especially when that's in the grades three through eight, gives them a great opportunity to go into high school with the ability, if they choose to, to take SATs or do other sorts of tests that might dictate where they go in the future. So just a positive answer. And when Dr. G comes up, if you have any thoughts on that too, I, I think that was the case for a lot of the LA side, but.
I do have two questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or a question, observation. Number one, seventh grade, if I'm not mistaken, that is the first year that they break into the general or the advanced math track. Are both those classes using the same curriculum? Is the pacing the only thing that's different or is the curriculum they're using different? And are we looking at the data for how those students in those two different classes are achieving?
That's a great question. In terms of the curriculum, yes, we're using our fish tank math, but what we support it with may be different for the different levels. The accelerated is truly accelerated. It goes faster.
Yeah.
Right? Not necessarily deeper. I have not taken the data and separated it by level, but I, I mean, by the accelerated versus the, the level one, level two. But I could absolutely do that to see if we see any trends in a particular subgroup, if you want to make it that way.
Could be interesting.
Yeah, could be.
The other thing is, you started this whole thing by saying, just talking about, like, it doesn't look like much. For those of us who have sat here, year after year, this looks like a whole lot. I remember when differentials looked a whole lot different and, yeah, so.
I think we're headed in the right direction.
Thank you. Yeah, there's always room for growth. There's always room for improvement. But it feels good to see in real time, year after year, some of those gaps closed, some of the achievement come through. And like you said, seeing students who may not have met standards are now meeting standard, you know, that it's, it's a good, so thank you. Because it is, there is a lot to see here. You just have to look pretty closely sometimes to figure out where we came from and where we are.
Thank you very much, Ms. Doherty.
Hello. Secondary English MCAS school versus the state. There is a three-point differential between Abington and the state behind. Two points behind the state at grade eight and six points behind the state at grade 10. Last year, it was 11 points behind the state. So we have closed that gap a little bit and that's something that I'm pleased about. I decided to look at the numbers a little bit differently this year. 79% of the students in grade seven passed. That includes partially meeting expectation as well as meeting and exceeding. In grade eight, 77% did the same. And 83% of students at grade 10 fell into the partially meeting, meeting and exceeding. The other thing that I wanted to do is compare that to the state. So it was two, two points behind the state, one point behind the state, one point above the state in grade seven. So the numbers are really close. But one of the things I think about an awful lot is what does the state average mean? If the state average isn't very good, what does it mean to be at the average? So I wanted to look at what percentage of all available points did our students earn versus the state? And both grade seven and mass earned 54% of all available points. Just think about a test that you took. If your score was 54%, what would that mean? At grade eight, 58% was more than the 57% of all available points earned by the state. And the numbers go up in the high school, even though the differential is lower. That Ampton High School earned fewer points than the state, but they got 64% of all available points. And the state got 66% of all available points. Generally, in my classroom, I consider 80% meeting the standard. And it's just interesting to me that meeting and exceeding the standard is one thing, but scoring all available points on the test is another. And we think about what is out there to get, how wonderful is the state average, really? Couldn't we all be doing better? Couldn't we all be doing better by focusing on mastery learning and getting more percent of the all available points? So what concerns me most, and I will tell you this from a point of experience, I had three sections of level-two sophomores last year. So each individual student was a data point who sat in my classroom for the entire year. So when I look at students who did not meet and partially met expectations, I knew them by name, I knew how they read, and I knew how they wrote. And one of the things that I know is most students who did not meet expectations were in the high needs group. It includes low-income students, students with disabilities, and English learners. And some of these students did not complete the writing tasks, really the effect of question two. They didn't know they were gonna really take MCAS, no matter how much we say it, because it didn't count anymore. So what am I doing in this room? And why would I spend the time with a complex item? And they had to stay in the room for four periods. They couldn't finish and go. So they could have worked, but chose not to. One of the things I am doing this year by teaching level-one sophomores is to teach students to meet and exceed standards targeting grades of A and B, five and four, on the writing rubric. Because students who didn't meet expectations earned Ds. Students who partially met them earned Cs. If you teach in a standards-based environment, then your students who earn Bs are meeting expectations, and the students who earned As are exceeding. And one of the things that frustrates me as a teacher is the student who says, did I write enough to pass? How many words, how many paragraphs, how many pages? And the idea is kind of, can I get this over with now? This unpleasant task that I want not to do in the first place. And I think we have to shift our focus beyond passing classes, and that's a threat that I've heard from all my colleagues. How do you incentivize something in a power ranking that really doesn't impact them individually? We used to have the incentive, do your very best because you want to make sure you graduate. And that is something that was important to families and to students. And they were students who tried hard on multiple attempts to pass the test and our scholarship, which may not turn out to be very much, really, in today's economy. But how do you get someone to want to do their best? Because doing their best is the important thing. Not because your family pressures you, but because everything that I do, I want to be my best, whether it's MCAS or a grade in a class or anything like that. So we need to, the new graduation requirement at grade ten is passing grade-ten English. So many of the accommodations that we use to support students to get to that sixty, or to that seventy, or to that eighty, might include using audiobooks, multiple drafts, more writing, translated texts, and scores in line with standards-based grading. One of the hardest thing I had to do to honor sophomores was say, I'm giving you the grade of eighty if you meet standards. You have to show me your exceeding standards to earn above a B, an eighty. And they would say to me, when they got an eighty-four, where did my sixteen points go? And I said, well, you met the standard and then some. You didn't do anything wrong, it's not inaccurate, but it's not exceptional. And that's a very hard thing to state to students who are used to counting up the number of questions at a certain point value that gets to an A. But a piece of writing is very difficult to exceed expectations in if you're looking at how much is enough and what do I think is good. So this year, I've taken on the idea of, I've discussed this with Mr. Bourne, how do you get from better to best? And it's vocabulary, it's sentence variety, it is not using the low-hanging fruit, like the most obvious example. It's not more examples, but it's the nuance and the commentary on the example, and making connections to other content areas, other parts of the book. So while you might write an accurate response, it meets expectations, but it doesn't exceed them. And to tell that truth to students all the time makes more sense when it gets to something like MCAS or PSATs or advanced placement. We do need to work on student engagement and persistence at the high school. How do you persist when something isn't clear to you? And this is beyond context clues, but how do you think about the explanations you're writing? The arguments that Mr. Scott referred to? We have worked for a year on arguments, but we're also realizing that some of the texts that we use are no longer engaging. So that's what we're working on in our PD this year. But we are really trying to think about not just being content with an average, but our best, even for students who find things to be difficult, and communicating what best truly is. Any questions? Yes.
Just because you mentioned that some of the texts are no longer interesting to students, do you have a mechanism for bringing in new ones? Are you trying to?
So what we've started to do using our common planning time is to find out what other schools are doing, what texts we think would be engaging to students, and we're reading around as a department to see what it is that we could and should replace. We've been teaching All Souls for about twenty years at grade ten, and it doesn't resonate. I know that's hard to believe, but it doesn't. And I don't think we have a text in which the human beings have cell phones or computers. And it doesn't mean that classic texts are irrelevant, but students fail to identify themselves, their community. And there are, of course, classic human struggles. But if you have to spend, and when you teach Catcher in the Rye, reacquainting students with what life was like in nineteen forty-five for a school-aged student, a peer, it takes the wind out of the sails, if that makes sense. And I, I was in eighth grade in nineteen seventy-four when All Souls and the forced busing situation sort of hit the scene. And I didn't remember, I was in Taunton. The Boston News didn't mean that much to me, and of course, I've been immersed in it for the last twenty years. But students have a kind of somewhat who cares attitude towards something. So what will students care about? What dynamic? What sort of individuals? What sort of issues? And will they take place in a world that they recognize? Our curriculum is very nineteen forty-five to nineteen seventy-heavy, and it would be nice to read books that are after, well, twenty-first century, let's call it that. And we're twenty-five years in, so. But do we have a mechanism? We would look at it together as a department. We'd pitch it to budget, and we'd see what we could do.
Okay.
When do you anticipate having a shortlist or?
Well, we have a shortlist right now, and we're reading through that. We're looking mostly at grade ten as needing the most invigoration. Because when All Souls goes, a lot of the documentaries goes with them. So we have room for, I think on either side of us, there are four major texts, and we had two major texts plus documentaries. So we have room to, I would think, change at least three of those texts, and we're looking for a new text for seniors. So I'd be happy to send you along our shortlist.
I would love to.
And get your advice, absolutely. But I don't have it typed up yet, but I will.
Yeah.
I'll be happy to email it to you or send it to Ms. Gaylor or Dr. Bosse.
When my other life meets this life and they collide in the middle.
Well, we were looking for recommendations too. So if you have any recommendations for what you'd like to have our students read, we would be grateful to receive them. We're looking for fiction as well as nonfiction, and we're looking across age ranges, particularly grade ten and twelve.
Can I ask another, just a follow-up?
Oh, sure.
On that, only because English department, have, do you have any exploration with graphic novels right now? Because we know that is the fastest-growing category of books.
So at grade eight, we're reading Almost American.
Yes.
And that's a graphic novel that kids just have embraced.
Yep.
In grade ten, Parable of the Sower. My entire grade-ten class used the graphic novel version for that. In grade twelve, we have The Watchman, which is a kind of comic book meets graphic novel meets, meets novel. But we, we have three in the seven through twelve. We'd like to look at them, and I know I don't have graphic novel there. It's super helpful to students who are more concrete, for students who are having English language learning. We also have one, we're, we're reintroducing Brave, not Brave New World, Fahrenheit four fifty-one, and we have a graphic novel available for that too. One thing I didn't know happens is that there is a percentage of human beings who don't have a mind's eye. So unless they see it, they can't know it. It's not something that they can call up, an image of something they have seen before. And the graphic novel is super helpful.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gonzo.
Thank you.
Thank you to all the staff for presenting. I know it's a long day, long night, so appreciate it. Dr. Bosse, can I ask you one quick question on the additional questions? And it's really quick, you don't have to go back to it. The term "pass" came up a few times tonight and "partially", and I guess just for general awareness, just because it's clearly not meetings and exceeding that would have been. Two years ago, did the graduation requirement include, did competency determination include partially meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Because I knew there wasn't that many people that was struggling to get it for you. That's, that's, as, when, Ms. Doherty, when you brought it up, I think that's where it kind of clicked, that that's where, okay, that's where it kind of fits in, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Want me to keep going?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's the hour, not.
Yeah, don't worry about it.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the next two items, the next three items are mine also. I'll try to be brief with these. So there's been a move and requirement at the state level that's been focused on the career and technical schools in the state. They've changed their application and admission guidelines and regulations. A side effect of that has been a, a focus on middle schools and public middle schools giving access and attention to the vocational and career technical school system. So there is a requirement from DESI that by November first, unless you apply for an extension, all public school districts have in place what they're calling a middle school pathway exploration policy. Mr. McCurtin happens to be here tonight, so I'm gonna talk briefly about ours, but he is also here to answer questions. Essentially, the policy that you see before you, thank you, Mrs. Gaylor, for getting those copies, puts, formalizes what we've been doing in Abington for a number of years in partnership with South Shore Votech. As far as giving access to our students, allowing students to take tours, and really collaborating, a collaboration between the administrative team at Abington Middle School, including our guidance counselor, Ms. McDermott, and staff at South Shore Votech. So the policy that you see before you, really, there's nothing new in there from what we've been doing. Does anyone have any questions for me or Mr. McCurtin?
And I'm just, I'll just add, Heidi and I, as the policy subcommittee, met with Dr. Bosse and Dr. Michelle on these last week, I think it was, and just kind of went over. And that was the general gist of it, was that it was a lot of what we've already been doing, but now we're required to formally document it. The student tours, Mr. McCurtin, how many students approximately went on the stu, there was a student tour, what, two weeks ago to South Shore Tech?
Trying not to come to the microphone tonight. However, yeah, we, we had two busloads of students, approximately seventy students went.
Is that more than usual or?
So we actually haven't done a field trip since we were at Frollo.
Okay.
And so that part of the new requirement is the field trip.
Yeah.
So this was the first year we did that. But that is the approximate number of applicants we usually have, so it, it kind of lines up there.
Okay, great. And I think in talking with Dr. Michelle and Dr. Bosse, too, part of this is there's a new admission policy for technical vocational schools that is pretty much a lottery.
Exactly.
It's a lottery at this point. There's, you can, the application, I don't know, I don't want to say grades don't matter, but I don't know how much, they don't matter like they did. So I think a lot of this in talking to them was that with that being put into place, they wanted public school districts to have their policies surrounding that essentially, giving equal opportunity to everybody to access it.
Exactly.
Did that pretty much right.
Do we, do we know what our lottery allocation is?
I don't exactly. Sixty is some number that feels, for, for all four grades.
For all four grades?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it also depends what other districts, if they don't send as many slots as they have, or non-member districts, how many students they're sending. So we get a wave of admissions in the spring, and then students are, historically have been admitted throughout the summer, and then some into tenth grade.
Do you anticipate there might be a larger number of applications just based on the feedback from the field trip?
I don't anticipate a larger number of applications. We typically have a lot of applications for South Shore Votech, and the process that has been used in the past for, from application day on has changed with the lottery system. Like Dr. Michelle was saying, our, our allocation hasn't really changed. There are a couple of towns that are member districts that don't typically fill their seats, so then those are redistributed by student population. I think the big change for our students is that on that lottery night, they'll know if they were chosen or not. But they also have a number assigned for those who did not get in. So if we have nineteen students that are accepted to South Shore Votech, and one student does not, or chooses not to go, then the person who was chosen as number twenty is next in line. So it's a very clear system for that. And there's obviously some different requirements for getting in there now. There's, they've removed a lot of what was there in the past because they had to.
When they apply, do they have to indicate, do students have to indicate a, a potential, like, pathway, major?
No, they actually don't do that at all, and they spend their first series of weeks going through all of the shops at Votech and experiencing all of them before they make a determination where they want to be.
Okay, so the lottery spots are just for admission, they don't allocate like this mini-colony area? Okay.
Correct.
And do they, have they changed the guidelines for, or the timeline, I should say, for acceptance of the spot before?
I don't believe so. I believe we're looking January, February-ish.
Okay. I know that was a very difficult time period for those friend groups for.
One of those things that I think that changed there, Heidi, will be, what would happen in the past is students would get their letters from home, and then that information would start to trickle in, because we don't get the letters. So we find out that students are receiving the letters, and other kids who have applied stop becoming anxious. And I think that's what you're kind of relating to. This is, now it's all done in one night. So I think there may be this big buildup of anxiety to a Thursday or Friday afternoon, I believe actually an afternoon, and then it's done.
Okay. And so everyone kind of knows?
My understanding is you're assigned a number.
Okay.
You're given access to the lottery system, and you're able to see it live. And it, South Shore Votech has invested in an independent company to do that, so there's no indication of any trickery. And then once you see, you're in. If you didn't see your number come up within the accepted number of students, it comes up in a later order in there, and you know where you stand.
I'm so fat, because now I'm wondering what happens if, and I don't want to use the term unfair, but like if a larger percentage ends up just cropping up for, say, Abington over some of the other towns, do they make adjustments?
No, it's actually done by town.
Oh, it is?
So they'll have their. I asked that question, I asked how it was done when we were over there last week. I went just to, to make sure I knew the whole process. And they'll do the lottery all in one day, but they'll do Abington's lottery, and then they'll do Hanover's lottery, and then, and it's all done specifically by town.
Okay. And I think my only other concern, it's interesting with the numbers, but if you're child number twenty and you know who number nineteen is, and like have they, has this come up in the past where?
We've never, they've never had this system?
Not here, but like.
And you're not told, that you know, as, as the parent, you know where your child stands. But what's coming up on that screen and what's being displayed is numbers.
Okay.
So you know you're assigned four lottery tickets for your son or daughter?
Yeah.
And you see that number come up, that's you, but unless you share that information of where you are?
Okay.
People wouldn't know.
And you can get lottery tickets if you can by doing, I don't want to speak for South Shore Votech.
Yeah, because I don't want to go down a path too far.
Right, but they, it's not our admissions, but there are ways to get up to four tickets. You get four, kind of four chances into the lottery.
I know South Shore Votech anticipates most students having four tickets.
Gotcha.
Any other questions about the policy? If not, I will make a motion to approve the middle school pathway exploration policy as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Ms. McCurtin.
And the next item is our competency determination. And the next item is our competency determination policy. You probably recall last year, we adopted a new policy after the ballot question in November, so that I believe it was in our, at our January meeting. Since then, the state has provided more guidance, more requirements, and so districts now have until December 31st of this year to provide DESI with our updated competency determination. So, the policy that you have in front of you, the bones of it haven't changed from what you approved in January of last year. The changes are highlighted in the bullets on the slide that you have. Starting with the class of 2027, there is going to be a requirement for a U.S. history course in a student's career in high school. And then also, we had to include specific language about how students with disabilities, English learners, and late-enrolling students. We heard earlier about a student coming to Abington after a certain point in high school, so, you know, a 10th, 11th, 12th grade student, where they weren't in Abington and didn't necessarily have the opportunity to take some of the courses that we have as a requirement for our competency determination. What do we do for those kids? So, those three subgroups, students with disabilities, English learners, and late-enrolling students, DESI has put in place a requirement for competency determinations to address how we will support those students. They didn't put in a requirement for what we do, but we have to address what we, how we would handle situations for those subgroups of students if they're not meeting the competency determination. And the options, as you can see in the policy, the options, let's see, it's under transcript review and standardized test court considerations. Either we would have our, it's at the discretion of our principal to look through a student's transcripts to see, do they have equivalent courses to what we require in their transcript? Or potentially use a meeting or exceeding expectation score on MCAS. So, those sections were added to the competency determination, as well as a process for families to appeal if a student does, and I said this when I talked with the subcommittee, I'm not sure why anyone would appeal if a student met the competency determination, but you could. Or more likely, if your student didn't meet the competency determination, what is the process for a family or student to appeal that determination? So, that is in the policy. And then lastly, for students who may have not met the competency determination that was in place when they were a student who graduated, or didn't graduate, from Abington High School during the period that MCAS was part of a graduation requirement, so 2003 to 2024, any of those folks can come back to us, and through the process that's in the policy, we need to compare their existing transcript to today's competency determination requirements. And if they meet it, then we're giving them a diploma. So, those are the highlights of what's new. Those are the required sections that we had to add based on DESI guidance, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Or Mr. Bourne is also here to answer a question.
Other question.
Go ahead.
What is the timing of these determinations? So, as early to the appeals process, are we talking about students having dialogue in early May, or are these determinations happening well in advance of a graduation date?
And you didn't think you were going to have to go to the podium either. That's fine.
Thank you. These questions actually happen concurrent when a student comes to us, because our first issue, or our first focus is, what do we need to do to build their schedule and get them to graduate by our local standards, period? And rarely, in fact, I was thinking before you even asked the question, I was waiting like, where would there be a disconnect? And our core standards, our high school standards match everything laid out in competency determination. So, days within them becoming a student. In our school, we've laid out a path for them to get a high school diploma. The issue is sometimes that they're not able to graduate with their chronological cohort, so they may be 17, turning 18, but they need another year of high school based on their transcript. So, even if they had met the competency determination, they still haven't hit enough Abington High School requirements to graduate. So, that's usually our first focus.
Okay.
Is that into your question?
Yeah, I guess where I was going is like if a student has in their schedule that second semester senior year, they need to take chemistry and receive a passing grade, and they're at risk for not receiving it. Do we have with the, with the 15 days of the appeals process, are those things happening over a graduation date? I guess that's my concern.
These would be, you know these well in advance.
We would be basically hand over hand with the student, day to day, contact with the parent.
Gotcha.
But there are some things that come down to the wire, but they're never a surprise.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What is a passing grade? Like what is considered a passing grade?
Funny you should ask.
School council meeting?
So, we just actually talked about this afternoon, school council. I'm going to answer this the shortest way possible. A 60 is a passing grade in class. That's the shortest way I can answer that question.
Thank you.
Dr. Michelle, and Dr. Boss, and everyone that works, we know there's a much longer answer to that question.
Yes, there is.
Fair enough, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the competency determination policy as presented.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll give it to you.
Thank you, Mr. Bourne.
Thank you. Unfortunately, it's me again.
I know it is.
This one's very quick.
You said unfortunate, not me.
Yep. Just, I have one more after this, too. Just a quick reminder that on Tuesday, November 4th, we have our third annual Abington Innovates Professional Development Morning, where our teachers have been given a menu of professional development sessions offered mainly by colleagues, but also by some outside presenters on topics that are very varied in nature. We also, thanks to Mr. McCurtin, we have one session where the, three sessions, we have three sessions where, do you want to talk about this? I'll just talk about it. Come on, this is a fun one to talk about.
This is a fun one.
Anyway, so that's coming on Tuesday. Mr. McCurtin is going to talk about one that's pretty interesting and cool, but it's been very successful with our staff in the past, giving teachers the opportunity to select sessions that most fit their needs or their interests. So, we have three sessions, and three of them that Mr. McCurtin's going to talk about are pretty cool.
So, we've seen some positive aspects of having a comfort dog around the district. I think we can all agree to that, and we've seen a group of comfort dogs come in at various times when we've had some pretty difficult things to deal with for kids and staff. I happen to have a familial connection. My brother is one of the three main trainers for the Plymouth County Comfort Dogs Program through the district attorney's office. So, through him, I contacted the district attorney's office, and they are sending, well, District Attorney Cruz will be here for session one to review what the program is, the data that's been collected through the grant run at Bridgewater State College that kind of runs the whole program, and then talk to us about what these dogs and what the comfort dog program can do to provide for students in classrooms when the need is there. Brief example of that, recently, we happened to have a fire alarm go off in the middle of 5th grade lunch. Not the greatest day to be a 10-year-old here. Following that, once everything was in and all the communications and everything was done, and we were sure we were safe, we brought Harlow around to all the 5th grade classrooms and just did a check-in. And it makes a difference. So, while we have an opportunity to really delve into the program and make sure that our entire community understands that that resource is there and how it can be used, I thought it best to take advantage of that.
Thank you, Mr. McCurtin.
Thank you. So, teachers will be with us for those three sessions from 8:00 to 11:30 here at the middle high school, and Townwide PTO has coordinated with all the PTOs to provide grab-and-go snacks and beverages for our staff. Anybody have any questions about Abington Innovate? Yes?
This is just a comment. I think this is great. I think this is wonderful. One thing I just hear from teachers a lot is, I wish we had more time to talk to each other, and earlier tonight, even a teacher mentioned like how hard it is to get out of your classroom and observe another teacher, and this is just, even though it's not observing with students, it's just a really nice way to share expertise. So, I think this is great. We have a lot to learn from each other.
Nice. I just, I want to thank Dr. Bossa for all the work he does putting this together. I look over his shoulder in June, and he's reaching out to people and arranging for, for outside people to come in, and then he does the registrations, and he does the flyers. And as you said, the feedback we've received from our staff over the last few years is it's really, I'd like to say the first day of school is the highlight of the year, but this is the second best day for them, just being able to share, I think you said, time with their colleagues and learning from each other and sharing their expertise. So, thank you, Chris, and thank you to all those that are presenting on Tuesday.
Thank you.
The list is incredible, like I mentally am like, oh, I would do this one, and this one, and these three, and so this is, please pass our thanks to the professionals in the district, too, who are taking the time to present, because I also am aware that that means they might not be able to partake in all of this. So, it, you know, it's a big gift from them, big ask from us, but this is what makes this spectacular.
It's a great day.
Thank you.
Can we come?
Yeah. You can come. We'll be here.
I might show up. Oh, boy.
Thank you, Dr. Bossa.
Thank you.
You up again?
Well, I, I'm going to kick it off a little bit. This has been like a non-speaking meeting for you, which is really unusual. So, we're going to talk a little bit about our strategic plan and provide an update for our strategic plan, as I talked about last month when I talked about my goals. We have our strategic plan, everything we do in the district, most everything we do relates back to our strategic plan. My goals relate to the strategic plan, principals' goals, school improvement plans, all feed back into, into our strategic plan. So, tonight, excuse me, we're going to give you an update on two of the strategic objectives within the strategic plan, teaching and learning, and culture and inclusion. And we're going to provide you with what we accomplished last year towards our five-year strategic plan, and then some initiatives moving forward for this year. Next month, you'll hear a report on communication and on district operations. Dr. Bossa and...
Right, sorry.
Mr. Bourne.
It's me again, and Mr. Bourne's going to join me. So, last year, the focus of our work in the district related to the teaching and learning objective was our strategic initiative number 1.1, which is clearly articulate how the Abington Public Schools' mission, vision, and guiding principles improve student outcomes. We presented last year, a year ago, at, yeah, the October school committee meeting, the different action steps that we were going to be undertaking during the year. As an administrative team, we looked at the mission, vision, and guiding principles to determine how do those live in our schools, and then building principals and assistant principals moved that out to their staff and did that during the rest of the year, starting to look at what is the mission, vision, and what do the mission, vision, and guiding principles mean in the classroom, or in the office workspace that you might work in? And that's ongoing work, so that is not something that we're going to ever cross off and say that we're done with that. We'll always be coming back to our mission, vision, and guiding principles to make sure that they're embedded in our curricular documents and in our units and lessons and learning activities that our students are partaking in. So, so that's going to be carried through. You're going to hear about 1.1 is going to stay on our teaching and learning slide probably until 2029. So, it's ongoing work. Added this year is 1.2, developing school-based, age-based, end-of-year expectations linked to the vision of the graduate. You have heard over the years, and Mr. Bourne is about to jump in on this, that the high school team developed a vision of the graduate several years ago as part of their NEAS work, and one of our goals, one of our initiatives, not goals, one of our initiatives through the strategic plan is to, to come up with what does that look like as we are building into the high school? So, Mr. Bourne, I'm going to pass it over to you, and he's talking about the bottom of the screen.
I think, just, Kim, I want to revisit your question of what is passing of a 60, because it's going to be meaningful here. I think one of the things we are trying to look at and have been trying to look at is our vision of the graduate, or really any of the vision of the graduate, is a statement of standards or behaviors, and less an accumulation of courses where you scored a 60 or better. And so, part of our shift is how do we, beyond the aspirational values of a vision of the graduate, of course, things we would love students to be able to do, is trying to now, instead of just having these goals of what we'd love for you to do, is blending in that assessment measurable aspect, which is written into the goal. How can we give you, the student, you, the family feedback on how your kid is doing on some of these things? And part of it is building our propensity, say, your kid's getting a 60 as a socially competent contributor, it's here's what they're doing, here's what they're not doing, here's opportunities they're taking advantage of, here's behaviors that they're showing. So, some of that is how we are defining those standards in those grades and in those areas. So, it is a bit of a shift for us, and it is just requiring a thinking shift while our next layer consumes our numbers, our 80s, our 88s, our GPAs that are driven by numbers. So, we are trying to figure out ways to weave those things in, while, as I think you heard Ms. Corbett mentioned, the state just piloted, I think with cooperation and collaboration from the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, their own pilot for a vision of the graduate, which gave us an opportunity to be like, okay, let's see what the state put forwards, puts forward. And I don't know if that's in lieu of some of the undercutting, frankly, that the MCAS has experienced the past year, that they're like, well, without the MCAS, now there's our state vision of the graduate. So, we may be revisiting our vision of the graduate anyhow as a school, never mind as a district, but the conversations and plans are in place. How do we shift away from that minimal compliance? What do I need to do to get a 60 to more positive aspirational student behaviors and outcomes?
And that will be happening at each grade level in each building. What does a second grader look like at the end of second grade before they become a third grader? What does a fourth grader, and so on and so forth, connecting up to the vision of the graduate at the high school?
I think grade level is important, too, and not just building.
Exactly, building level, so, yeah. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Bossa. Thank you, Mr. Bourne.
Dr. Robbins and Ms. Vicki at Woodsdale will be discussing our action plan around culture and inclusion.
Thank you. Yep, so, as Dr. Michelle said, we're, our, our strategic objective pertains to culture and inclusion. And so, what that, what this means in direct terms is, we're trying to just increase the use of inclusive practices throughout our district. And when we say inclusive practices, these are a number of research-based practices that are intended to serve English learners, students with disabilities, and at the same time promote social emotional development. And while they're necessary for vulnerable populations, these practices are understood to serve all, all populations in a classroom. So, when we devised this goal, it consisted of six action steps, and just tonight, we, there are three that we regard as completed, because there were just concrete tasks that we had to do, and I'm just going to remind you of what those three items are. And then after I do that, I'll turn it over to Melanie, who'll just talk about the three items that we're continuing to work on this year. Okay? So, when it, when it comes to the steps that, that we'd undertaken to this point, so these were things that we considered having completed last year, the first of which is creating a look-for guide for inclusive practices that will... The first of which is creating a look-for guide for inclusive practices that we would make use of during our administrative learning walks. So as I'm sure you all already know, on a roughly once-a-month basis, our administrative team will descend on one of our buildings here and will get into small groups and take walk-through classrooms. And the idea is we'll see teaching and learning happening in action. And then afterwards, we try to have productive conversations about what seems to be working well, what raises questions for us, and so on. But in order to promote the growth of inclusive practices, what we've done is we've devised a look-for guide. So this is, what this does is it encourages all folks who are taking the learning walk to look for certain practices, either the presence of or absence of, just so that they can note them and make sure that afterwards, during our debrief sessions, we were noting whether or not we're seeing inclusive practices. So this look-for guide has been completed and so we consider this a completed item. Following that same line of thought, we've created a reflection and conversation guide. This was something that was created initially by DESI and adapted by us for what we consider to be effective questions so that when our team is having our debrief after look fours, after our walkthroughs, we're making sure to have like full thorough conversations on the use of inclusive practices, what seems to be working, what additional support staff are needing to effectively implement them, and so on. So the first two items are kinda related, but essentially we feel like we've completed our look-for guide to guide our learning walks and our reflection and conversation guide to deepen our conversations regarding our learning walks. And as I mentioned, there was one other item that we regarded as completed, and that is we wanted to make sure to expose our staff to professional development on universal design for learning. And this is a phrase that refers to just alternative ways of presenting information, engaging students, and assessing their learning. And the idea is that all students in classes are composed of different skills and deficits and so on. So if you give students multiple pathways for just showing their learning, they're more likely to be engaged and productive during the learning process. So last year, during our keynote professional development, we dedicated that to universal design for learning, and that presenter came back midway through so that we could just have a review of these concepts. What was helpful is that our presenter dealt with this in a really like concrete way. So like folks brought their laptops and were able to like use their own curriculum materials and say, hey, what are alternative ways that I might be able to assess a student's learning on this topic and so on? So just to put it back in one sentence, essentially, we feel like we've completed three action steps on this toward this objective, which is the creation of a look-for guide for learning walks, the creation of a conversation and reflection guide for our learning walks, and by making professional development available on universal design for learning. And I'll turn it over to Melanie to talk about our work this year.
All right, yes. So the three action steps that are currently ongoing, kinda to take the words off the page, I'm just gonna describe to you what they look like in our schools right now. The first action step, as James had mentioned, are using a look-for guide to complete our walkthroughs. The administrative team are participating in walking through each building as we can to provide strategic suggestions, kind of calibrate alignment of those inclusivity practices. But honestly, I feel like one of the biggest benefits is us as administrators being able to see where the students are starting and where they're going through each building. So that's gonna be really valuable practice for us as administrators to get out of our own buildings and see what's going on in all these classrooms. The second action step that again is currently ongoing is, I know Ms. Ellis mentioned it, that teachers love to be able to have the opportunity to have the peer-to-peer observations. And we're trying to encourage and collaborate with them to give them those opportunities. The best way I can say it is teachers are doers, not sayers. So if you ask them how they're meeting diverse needs, they don't quite know how to answer it, but if you go watch their classroom, they're doing it in multiple ways that they don't even know they're doing it. So providing that for that opportunity is go in and see and pick up a new tool to bring back to their classroom and then benefit a child is invaluable. So we're continuing to encourage those opportunities. And last but not least, the administrative teams and Dr. Robbins are working on relevant paraprofessional professional development. It's difficult because each paraprofessional does not do the same job with the same student every day. So trying to provide them with something they can take back to their classrooms, their cohorts, their students, is something that's ongoing and can be challenging. Some of the opportunities we've provided them for at building levels are we've given them behavior management, professional development, social emotional learning, professional development. We've included them in case conferences about in particular students who have a higher level of needs. And this gives them the opportunity to be able to collaborate with service-related providers, including speech and occupational therapists who on a daily basis they don't get a chance to consult with. So again, that information to kind of round out the care of the student is valuable. And lastly, we've provided them opportunities to build, community building opportunities for them to be able to collaborate, chat, commiserate with each other on a daily basis. And that's all for ongoing steps right now. Any questions?
Can you just give a specific example or two of something that might be in the look-for guide?
Yep, yep, exactly. One of the first items is where's the teacher positions in the classroom to make sure that students are getting like individual attention as needed. The next question is are students with similar needs seated strategically to make sure that, you know, they can give resources in an effective way? Another thing pertains to sheltered English immersion strategies such as making language visible and using alternative strategies so that like students whose language isn't quite where it needs to be, it can be supported in the classroom. Some other items include making use of de-cap strategies. And when we say de-cap strategies, we mean like routine accommodations. So like, so if we're in an ELA class, what routine accommodations does a student, does a teacher appear to be using? And there are also some items about just sort of building relationship and community and just sort of like those, the social emotional measures. And those are kind of the main categories that come through.
Okay, that's perfect. I was just looking, trying to get something more concrete.
Thank you.
I have one question, if I could. Are there educators at each building that are kind of UDL people? Is there a resource other than you both and specifically you, Dr. Robbins, I would think, that can support teachers daily? Specifically on like UDLers or things that are areas where an educator maybe has additional professional development that they sought outside of Abington Public?
I would say that at the elementary level at least, that like the classroom teachers really heavily rely on the use of the special educators coming in and being able to have a second eye on the whole class instruction and how they can modify or accommodate that way. And P to four, there's a specific special educator that's kind of programmed into that grade. So building these, we would probably refer to them first before kind of taking the next step for Dr. Robbins. Do you want to talk about the upper level?
Yep, yep. Yeah, and then I would say that you are pointing on something where we don't have a definitive defined point person for, which is just sort of like a UDL. Now, what is true is that our administrators, you know, Captain Born and McCurton have a bit more training on these topics than many of their teaching staff. So they serve as, they serve as point people within their building and as part of their faculty meetings and as part of everything. These ideas have been shared. But what we haven't done, and it's, I think it's a very positive and productive suggestion, is try to enrich certain members of staff on these topics so that other people can just go to like, because they're just right down the hall. So I think that could be a way forward on that topic for us.
Right, someone who's passionate or someone who's taken additional classes because a lot of educators continue to learn themselves. So it'd be nice to have each other as a resource if that doesn't seem a burden.
Thank you, Ms. Vicky. Thank you, Dr. Robbins. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to again take this opportunity to thank our faculty, our staff, and our administrators for really embracing our strategic plan and the contents of the plan. These are only as good as our people make them. So thank you for kind of living our strategic plan each day.
Thank you. Before I move on to kind of the rote stuff at the end, I just wanted to take a minute. Earlier tonight, more than fifty members of the Abington High School community were inducted into the National Honor Society. So, and I believe one of them may be a child of one of us sitting up here.
You are correct.
Mrs. Hernandez's daughter was also one of them. I wasn't, I had to miss her, so I wasn't sure if she was already in her nut.
Andrew did a fantastic job today.
Thank you, Andrew. So congratulations to all of you. I wanted to mention that. So moving forward, our next school committee meeting will be November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, back at six thirty PM here in the library. Some dates, one that's not on here, I found out about after the fact, this Saturday night, November first, Abington Copes, Melissa Cook was here earlier, is hosting a Halloween party for middle school age students from six to eight PM. I believe it's five dollars and just reach out to her at abingtoncopes@gmail.com if you plan on attending. Sounds like a great time, something Copes has tried to do continuously for the teens, the teen initiatives in the community. So I think it'll be a good night for a lot of those kids if they wanted to go. So it'll be at the Folio School on Saturday, November first. Monday, November third, Woodsdale PTO meeting in the cafeteria at seven. Tuesday, November fourth, as Dr. Bossa went over, is a teacher in service for Abington Innovates, and there is no school for students on that day. Wednesday, November fifth, music parents meeting in the band room downstairs at six thirty. Thursday, November sixth, Beaverbrook PTO meeting in their cafeteria at seven o'clock. And then the last of the fun back-to-back stuff. So on Thursday, November sixth, is Abington Middle School Parent Teacher Conference in the evening. And Friday, November seventh, is the afternoon, which is also an early release day for Abington Middle School only on Friday, November seventh. Monday, November tenth, the middle school PTO meeting in the cafeteria downstairs here at seven PM. Tuesday, November eleventh, is Veterans Day. There's no school and I believe all buildings are closed, correct? All buildings are closed that day? And then finally, this will be after our meeting, but right after our meeting. So Wednesday, November twenty-sixth is an early release day for everybody. What was that?
How can it already be?
And then Thursday, November twenty-seventh, and Friday, November twenty-eighth will be Thanksgiving break, and there's no school on either of those days. So by the time this gets published after our next meeting, it'll be after those days probably. So get them out now. So with that, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
I will make that motion.
Is there a second? All in favor? Thank you very much.